All right, at this time I would like to call to order the meeting of the Hardin County Board of Education. And the first thing on the agenda is the pledge allegiance to the flag. Y'all join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We've got a good crowd tonight, and we appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Fay Acher. She started with Hardin County as a teacher, was a principal, and interim principal at different schools, and so at this time, she was a great asset to Hardin County schools. So, we really appreciate the service that Fay provided for our school system. I'm sure there's many students that she impacted their life. So, a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. Board commitments? Ms. Johnston, you want to...
I've got them.
...read the board commitments?
To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board team commits to: Keep children first; Listen; Be prepared; Be professional; Demonstrate financial stewardship; Represent the entire district; And support district goals; And support board decisions.
All right, thank you. Recognitions? No recognitions in my johns. Focus on academics. Mr. Sutton?
Chairman Wise, glad to be up here tonight. Great crowd, and thanks everybody coming out. And one of the programs we're very proud of here is our preschool program. And we've got a great lady who takes care of that program for us across the district. And I do want to say before I call her up here, Ms. Carleen and Sharon's been in this district for 27 years as a teacher. Teacher first. She's been assistant principal. She's been our early childhood director. But she's more than that. She's a mentor to principals. She's a coach to our teachers. She's in our PLCs, in professional learning communities. She's always evaluating numbers. She's writing grants. She's always making a difference. So, for her to be able to share here tonight, want to call her up here. I promised I wouldn't call her the princess of preschool. That's her nickname. We don't call her that, though, in public, but we just did. Apologize. I'm director of early childhood. Come on up, Ms. Sharon.[193.62][193.62](APPLAUSE).
I'm just going to say, if that's the way Mr. Sutton introduces me, I'll come back next month, too.[203.23][203.23](LAUGHING).
Be happy, happy.
Yes. I will say, not only have I been a teacher in Hardin County schools for 27 years, but I'm also a proud graduate of Hardin County schools. I was a Vine Grove Elementary School, James T. Alton, North Hardin High School track graduate, so happy to be here. I'm going to talk to you tonight about something that I truly have a passion for, and that is early childhood education. Because I think, you know, we all know, when you look at the research that goes along with early childhood education, the more we do to help children start to be successful when they're young, the less remediation we have to do when they're older. So, I have the pleasure of working with preschool and kindergarten all the time, which is so enjoyable. Mr. Wright's going to start a PowerPoint, but I will start out by saying one thing I think that is surprising to people, is that the way you qualify for preschool is different than the way that you enroll in kindergarten through 12th grade. In preschool, you can qualify for three, well, four ways. Three and four, it's for three and four-year-old children. Four-year-olds can qualify if their families fall within 160% of the federal poverty guideline, so they can qualify by income. Four-year-olds also qualify if they are in the foster care program. They automatically qualify. And then the last way that four-year-olds qualify is the only way that three-year-olds qualify, and that is with an identified disability, or a delay, or a speech delay. And my department takes care of that process from the beginning to the end. A family that might have a concern about their child not meeting developmental milestones, we would take care of them from the screening, to the evaluation, to the placement in a preschool classroom. Kindergarten, all you, and we can go to that third slide, all you need for kindergarten, all you have to do for kindergarten is age. You have to be five by August the first, and you can attend kindergarten. You don't have to. You don't have to attend kindergarten until you are six years old by August the first, but parents have that option. This, the date just changed. It used to be October the first, and about five years ago, it changed to August the first. When it changed, our legislation also put into effect that if a family feels like their child is gifted and ready to go to kindergarten, they may apply to the district for early entry into kindergarten. They kind of fall within that range of August the second to October first. And then my department would also evaluate those children to identify if they can go to kindergarten early. And we have had a few children every single year that qualify for that and start kindergarten, and I always make sure that they adjust fine, and that they're doing fine, and they are so far, so that is awesome. All of our kindergartners in the state of Kentucky, new incoming kindergartners, and any children who might be repeating kindergarten, take the Brigance Readiness Screener. That is a screener that the state identified as a way to determine if children coming into kindergarten are ready to be successful on their own, they're more than ready, and they're ready with enrichments, or they're ready, but they need some interventions to really be more ready for kindergarten. So, the, it started in 2012 is when we started giving the Brigance Screener, and we give it every year. That's something our kindergarten teachers give in September, August, September. We turn the data in in October, and then the state releases the data in December. So, I will share some scores with you. So, I know this is small for anybody in the back, sorry about that. It was hard to fit it all on here. But when we look at our readiness scores, I put on here 18, 19, 19, 20, and you can see that '20, '21 is grayed out, and that is because we do not have scores back yet. We did give the Brigance Screener last year, but we did not turn it in until May. So, it will very soon go before the Kentucky Board of Education. When it is shared with the board, then it will be released to the public, and I will update these numbers, so Ms. Morgan can update them for you. But you could, I'll, just to give you in a nutshell, we've kind of gone just slightly up and down when we look at overall students. In 18, 19, we were at 52.6, and at 19, 20, we were at 49.1. The state really has stayed very flat-lined. They have been around 50, 51% the entire time since pretty much 2012. In parentheses, you can see that in 18, 19, we tested 995 kindergartners. In 19, 20, we tested 1,041. The state was right around the 40, almost 48,000 about, almost each year that they tested. And then I identified each one of our schools, and the scores that year that their students scored being ready for kindergarten. That would be they fell into the ready category, or the ready with enrichments. This does not include ready with interventions. So, if we look at, across the line at Cecilia Valley, you can see that 49.1% of their students, that's all students, were ready for kindergarten. When I just look at the preschool program, 51.7% of our children who were in preschool were ready for kindergarten that year. So, I always try to look at both of those, both of those pieces, reminding myself that four-year-olds, how they qualify for preschool. So, that first number includes preschool, and all the students who've never went to, you know, any kind of organized school, that came from home, that came from childcare, that came from kinship care, that would include everybody that came in. But our numbers, and our numbers kind of go up and down with different, in different schools. We use that data to help us identify what we need to do to help families and children in those communities. So, we'll say, and I say this all the time, so I'm not just saying this because I'm standing in front of our board. You can, every regional meeting I'm ever at, I tell them how lucky I am to have worked for two superintendents who truly understand early childhood, who get it and live it, and a board who truly understands early childhood, and is willing to do whatever we need to do to help families. So, something I am super proud of, because this is an example of our board going above and beyond, we offer, and we have offered for about the last five years, what we call preschool readiness academy classrooms. We have three of them in the district. They are funded differently than state-funded classrooms, so it allows us to let up to 60 children who would not qualify for preschool into the preschool program. And that has been a blessing for a lot of our families, because that's probably been one complaint I've heard from families just about the state program. You know, "I'm that close, but I can't get in." Well, those people that are that close get into our program now. That we have those three classrooms housed at Cecilia Valley, Lincoln Trail, and North Park, but families come from all over. So, you may be, you know, you may live in the Creekside area, and you may bring your child to the Cecilia Valley classroom, or the Lincoln Trail classroom. We kind of work with families on that. But our maximum that we can put in a classroom is up to 20 children. We have a 1 to 10 ratio, so we can have up to 60 children in there. About two years ago, we started a classroom at Cecilia Valley Elementary School that we call our outdoor classroom, outside classroom, which has been growing and growing. It is so neat to see. I certainly have the right staff in there that doesn't look at rain and mud and think, "Oh, maybe we won't go out today." They are like, those are the days they love. So, we spend half of our time, half of our day is outside learning, and half of our day is inside learning. We've built an outdoor classroom in the back. We have inside materials and outside materials, and the families and children that have experienced that have loved that. So, when I look at the data for the children that are in our preschool readiness academy classroom, keeping in mind that these children did not qualify for state-funded preschool, but there was something that the family told us, or something we saw, that we felt like preschool services would be so beneficial for them. The first, those first numbers for Hardin County and the state of Kentucky are the same, but at Cecilia Valley in 18, 19, the children that were in that classroom scored 83% ready for kindergarten. In 19, 20, it was 69%. And at the Lincoln Trail site, it was 82 and 84. And then at the North Park site, it was 73 and 67. So, we monitor those very closely, because if you walked in, you wouldn't be able to tell. You wouldn't know the difference. If I sent you to North Park, and there, we have 11 classrooms at North Park, you would not be able to pick out which one it is, because we're very uniform in the way that we operate. We still follow all the regulations, you know, three- and four-year-old children act like three- and four-year-old children, no matter whose classroom they're in, which is why it's such a fun grade to teach. So, we use that data to identify ways that we can help our community. So, when I, and this is just a little bit of how we, some things we do in our department to help families help their children with readiness. We have offered, this is the second year in a row that we've offered a Creekside-Cecilia Valley readiness kit program. We developed 11 readiness kits based on the kindergarten readiness areas. We put them together, have them all, everything they would need in a bag, and families can just roll up to Creekside and Cecilia Valley, those incoming kindergarten families, and pick up their bags. So, we are averaging about 18 families every Tuesday at Creekside, and about 15 families every Tuesday at Cecilia Valley. We have a summer in action camp. We've had a summer in action camp for, it's probably been about six years now. We, it's for four- to six-year-olds, and the locations have changed. This year, the location happens to be Creekside and Cecilia Valley, but anybody can come from anywhere in the county, and we do a lot of learning activities. Families stay with their children in that camp. And today, I was at Cecilia Valley for a training, and I popped in to check on them, and they had 19 children and their families today. Now, if I count mom, dad, grandma, the 19 children plus their siblings, we were probably somewhere around 55. So, it was wonderful. They were outside playing today. And then we developed a Facebook page. It's just called Hardin County Schools Kindergarten Readiness. And I try to keep that updated to communicate with families what the expectations are for their children, to let them know about open house, to let them know about documents that they have to have. Then we have a kindergarten readiness booklet that we pass out at pre-registration every year, and I have given you a copy of one that we had passed out. One thing that I truly believe in, and when a family asks me what's something I can do to help my children, I always tell them, "Read, read, read some more, read it again." You know, let them read it to you, because I think that makes such a difference in a child's life. There's so much vocabulary built, there's so many things you can do. So, we identified a few years ago the need to put some little free libraries on the very southern end of our county, where getting to the Hardin County Public Library maybe wasn't as easy. The little free libraries, they're kind of like big birdhouses. I don't know if you've seen them, but they're, they're just like a big birdhouse, but big enough that's got a door you can put books in there. So, they operate on, I give a book, take a book. So, if you, you know, get home from work, and the library's already closed, and your child wants to get a book, you can roll up there and get a book, and when you're finished with it, you can bring it back and just stick it in there. And those have been very, very, very successful in our southern end of our county. We actually have one at Cecilia Valley, Creekside, Lakewood, Meadowview, North Park. We helped just recently get one at Colvin Community Center. We have a couple of them at Freeman Lake, one of them at the E-Town Play Park. And then the last thing I put on here, well, I'll take you over to this side picture just real quick, because we have what we call a book patrol, and we work with the Radcliffe Police Department every summer to give them some books we can put in the hands of children, and they take them and put them in their cruisers, and when they're out, you know, talking to children in the neighborhood, they pass those out to families. And I have received the nicest notes from families about getting free books that way, and I think the police department has loved doing that. We collaborate with the Central Kentucky Community Foundation, Debette Sweeney for Get Ready Camp. It is a blessing for our community. Several, it's probably been seven years ago now, Debette called me and said, "Hey, there's a grant we can apply for, and we want to do something to help our community." And several of us brainstormed and came up with this Get Ready Camp, and it is a month-long camp for children and their families, birth to five. You can come every day, you can come a week, you can come one day. We have a AM session at Panther Academy, a PM session at Heartland Elementary, and then an AM and PM session at North Park Elementary. And I'm excited that, and I don't have a lot of information about it yet, but this coming summer, next summer, we will also offer a location in the most southern end of our county. So, lots of activities we do, singing, dancing, all that good stuff. And then some things that we just, we encourage families to do, you know, take advantage of those little free libraries, stop out there and get a book and read it, keep it as long as you want. Read it, read it till they can retell you the story, read it back to you. You know, sing in the car, count socks as you fold clothes. It's amazing how children can help you and think they're just telling you about math. Identify shapes of your household items, make grocery lists. I mean, there's so many fun things to do with this age that they love doing, and that makes them learn, because readiness truly is a community initiative. When you think that by the time they're five, starting kindergarten, our state is asking them all of those skills, it's going to start at birth, learning those skills, and then being ready for kindergarten. So, we certainly take, you know, certainly wherever our children are, we take them, and we're ready to roll forward, no matter where they are. We do offer, I didn't put this on there, but we offer a, at the hospital, we give our newborn babies a bib that says "Read to Me," and a little book that has a side for the child and a side for the parent. So, we've been doing that. Ms. Johnston started that years ago, and we have kept that up. So, we continue to work with our families. We are lucky to have some of the best families. I think I'm always proud of Hardin County when I go to state events, or, you know, regional events, because we are trying to do everything we can to help our children and our families get the right start to be successful the entire time they're in school and beyond. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any?
I have a question about the little libraries and donations. Do you take donations in books, or do you need to, you know, how do you, how do you make sure the books are appropriate?
We do. We take donations, and usually people will call us and ask us, "Can I give these, can I put these books in there?" And we check them. We go around, you know, we have them located in places that we can check them very regularly. In Radcliffe, we actually have a Radcliffe Literacy Initiative that we're, we're not necessarily involved in it, but they are going around checking. And they went around and checked for any kind of wear and tear on the library, plus making sure that there were books for all ages, and they were appropriate.
And what, how, what's the top age?
You, actually, the libraries can turn into anything. They can turn into a pantry. We have had bubbles in them for kids for a special event. They can be, you know, children, you, books you would read to newborn babies, to preschool, to adolescent, to adult books, that people want to share, like, you know, chapter books that you would read in the summer.
I have a lot of books.
Okay, awesome. I'll take them.[1292.26][1292.26](LAUGHING).
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, happy to.
So, Ms. Sharon, if somebody's watching this and is interested in having their child tested for preschool, what would their first step be?
So, all they would need to do is call our office, and that is 270-769-8911. Or, if they have a Facebook page, we are very active on our Hardin County Schools preschool page. We put an electronic link on there about three or four times a week, that families can actually sit in their recliner at the home and complete that application, submit it. When they submit it, it'll come to us and come back to them, and then we take it from there. We will call them to set up a time that we evaluate them. We evaluate often. We try really hard not to keep people on the list for, you know, very long.
All right. Thank you, Carleen. This is that little age group that just tells all when they come to school.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great age group.[1352.11][1352.11](LAUGHING).
All right, thank you.
Thank you.[1355.11][1355.11](APPLAUSE).
Okay, recognition of visitors, and we have two people that are signed up. Normally, we like to limit to about three minutes, but since there's only two, five or so will be fine. First will be Jenny Bowman and Katie Carey.
Can we see it together?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Bowman, and I am the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty Hardin County Chapter. The board was sent an email on July 5th introducing ourselves. As a reminder, Moms for Liberty is a nonpartisan, national group with over 65 chapters in 24 states, and we are still growing. Our mission is to hold our school board accountable for decisions affecting our children. The reason we are here tonight is because we would like to voice our concerns about critical race theory. We have been told that critical race theory is not on the board's radar, that Hardin County Schools will do whatever the Kentucky Department of Education tells them to do, and that it is a waste of time to address this issue with the board. Well, we are here to address this issue with you as concerned parents of children in Hardin County schools. After doing some research, we are under the impression that Hardin County School District standards do not currently include teaching CRT. However, CRT is being discussed within the Kentucky Department of Education. We are concerned parents that do not want CRT coming to our schools. CRT is a Marxist ideology. It teaches that kids should judge each other based on the color of their skin, not on the content of their character. It teaches that individuals are either an oppressor or a victim based on skin color. It teaches that America is systemically racist and must be dismantled. This topic of schools teaching CRT is causing a great divide in our country. On the Kentucky Department of Education website, under diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools, there is a slide that says, "It's up to all of us to advance equity and racial justice in Kentucky schools." The picture on the slide shows several adults raising their right arms and fists in the air. This is a symbol of communism slash Marxism. If you follow as a district, everything that the Kentucky Department of Education tells you to, is this where Hardin County Schools is headed. Tonight, we are requesting that Hardin County Schools please make a statement for the residents of Hardin County, so we know where our Board of Education stands on critical race theory. Ignoring the issue as a school district does not seem responsible, noting the division it is causing. Silence implies consent. We want to be proactive in our dialogue with you as the board before CRT comes to our schools, and so that we know where you stand on this issue. We believe strongly that this is a relevant and timely discussion to have, and we want to do all that is in our power to keep CRT from coming to Hardin County schools. So, again, we ask that Hardin County Schools make a statement. Would you be willing to ban CRT in the Hardin County School District? Gallatin County Schools in northern Kentucky went ahead and proactively banned CRT in a school board meeting on June 15th with a unanimous vote. Let's follow their strong lead on this issue. Finally, we will always approach you, the school board, with respect in your position and a willingness to work together to build our mutual trust. I hope that you as board members and the superintendent would approach the Moms for Liberty Hardin County Chapter with the same respect and willingness to work together. Thank you.
Thank you.[1611.83][1611.83](APPLAUSE). Okay, next is Brenda Scott.
My name is Brenda Scott. I am a grandmother of children in the Hardin County School System, and I love my grandkids. I love the children of Hardin County, and I want what's best for them, and I want to let you know that I'm not here to criticize. I don't know. We were under the impression that perhaps y'all were considering CRT. We were, a gentleman approached us, I thought he was one of your members, but I'm not positive, but he approached us, and he assured us that CRT was not coming to Hardin County, and that it would not be, it would not be accepted in Hardin County schools unless it was mandated for Hardin Counties. And I just would like a statement, just like the other lady. I'm saying the same thing that the ladies who were just up here, the Moms for their, for the kid, for the kids. I don't remember what their title was, Kentucky, maybe. But I just, I'm just here to express, if you're not going to vote for CRT, if you're not going to put it into our school system, we will be right here backing you and supporting you 100%. And that's, that's what we want to hear. We want a statement confirming that that is the truth. Thank you very much.[1718.11][1718.11](APPLAUSE).
All right. Thank you. We take all comments seriously. Are you going, you didn't sign up to speak, I believe. Well, come on up, and state your name.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm Carolyn Hicks, and I've been around for 100 years. I've taught in the Hardin County School System. And I think last week, the first time I heard about this CRT, and I still don't know a lot, and I just want, what is the criteria of it? What are they trying to do? Somebody, ladies? I mean, what's the criteria of it? I mean, it's, okay, the ladies that was presenting.
I'm going to have to kind of look and stick out.
Hmm? I mean, I mean, what are they trying to do? I need, I'm asking for information, because I don't know.
That's, that's a discussion you all are going to need to make outside, among yourself. We hear comments.
Okay, what, okay, it says, she said, "Critical race theory."
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, well, that's something that we don't get involved in. Okay, well, that's something that we don't get involved in.
No, I was asking the ladies, the Moms for Liberty.
That's why I'm saying you, y'all, you will need to talk to them outside or privately or some way, because that's not, that's not comments to the Board. We, we listen to comments to the Board. You know, if you're for it or against it, that's okay.
Okay, but if I don't know what it is, I don't know if I'm for it or against it.
Well, there's quite a bit of, you can get on the internet.
Where can I find information on it? Because I just happen to be looking.
There's quite a bit of information on the internet, and I'm assuming we could supply maybe some type of information, not right now, because we don't have it here. We've received a lot of information on this issue and.
Okay, well, the Moms for Liberty, where are you?
We're listening to comments, so. Yeah.
Okay, because, you know, like, I don't know if I'm for something, but I don't know what it's about. But I do know you said one thing, it was advanced for, like, liberty and equality for everyone. That sounds like a good point to me.
We've had some discussion about it. You know, this is something that's not state mandated, so we're going to take your comments seriously, and we will, at some point, have a stand on it, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you all. Construction updates. Don, you want to tell us about getting close to August the 12th school dates? We were promised East Hardin facility in January of 2021, and we still are pushing the border.
It's all COVID's fault, you know. That's, that's the, I guess, running joke. But no, we are, we are still plugging away at East Hardin. You've been out there today. I'm happy to report that you can now walk from the parking lot in the front to the front door without stepping over gravel or dirt. So to me, that was a big psychological improvement. I'm not saying we're done yet, but it was nice to be able to walk without getting my shoes dirty, which was a little odd because I went to go to the front door and they were laying tight, so then I had to walk in the dirt to go in the building. That, that was a good thing.
But I'm glad they're laying tight, so.
Sure, sure. So really good activity. Critical path right now seems to be with the electricians. They're, have been working on Saturday, I can report, as well as ADT. Appreciate Lace Team, our, our technology folks, they've been in close contact with the electrician and ADT for our data. We anticipate having temporary occupancy for the administration wing next week. I know there's, I don't mean to speak for Principal Nickel, but we do feel like if they have their open enrollment activity on the 22nd and 23rd, I believe, that they'll be able to visit the school. They won't be able to tour it, but they'll be able to come in, complete their paperwork to get enrolled, things of that nature. And so we will be pushing hard right up to the end of July to get the building in a state where we can occupy it. And we'll probably be continuing, as we always do, to fix minor things, punch out items going into the fall. So a lot of work's been going on. Appreciate Judge Blain came out and toured the facility a couple weeks ago. It's really nice. We had some student workers that were helping a little with the technology, and I think one of them that had went to the oldies commented, "It's quite a change." So I think the end will be a really good product, and we'll continue to race right to the end to get them in.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Also, if you've been out to Central lately, you may not have noticed any change, but one of, forewarned, Central folks says that I have two children that are attending there now, that change is coming. And they'll notice that most assuredly as they come into the parking lot, because it will have shrunk a great deal. So parking will be a premium over the next several months out at Central. But again, I think when we're done with that project, they will look back and be quite pleased with, with the outcome. So a lot going on this summer, so hopefully things will be ending as, as new projects, the Central project will be starting.
That almost sounded like because your two children were going there, there was going to be a change, John.
Well, I'm trying to commiserate. I do have a junior that may be looking for a parking pass. That'll be pretty hard to come by, so, yes.
We're, we're going to do our best to provide spots for the students that needs them, but it will be tight over the next thirty months or so, because we are starting a renovation project out there, and it's going to be a really nice addition to the school.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stith, as I understand, because of the changes to parking, you are going to work with Mr. Wright to have a video of where students will need to park if they're driving the first day?
Yes, ma'am. It's a lot of our schools doing. We have a change of this magnitude. John and his team and Gina Ryan, who does a fantastic job with HECTV, will shoot some videos letting parents and students know what the new path into the school is going to be. It won't be quite as easy to get in the building. It'll be very prescribed. There'll be some fences involved, but we want to make sure everybody knows how to navigate, how to navigate the facility once, once they arrive this fall.
All right, thank you. Normally, we have a noon meeting where we work and talk with architects and construction managers, and believe me, some of the things that they have heard from us in the past few months have not been what they wanted to hear, because they have really had the pressure applied to them to get this school on track. And, but we also understand that help is scarce everywhere, so whether you're in McDonald's line, you're going to wait, or I guess whether we're getting the school built, we're waiting. So we, we appreciate it, but they probably didn't want to be here tonight because they're not quite finished. All right, we're down to consideration of the consent agenda. And pretty much standard here, we got approval of assurances for, from the federal year 2022, approval of an agreement for full utilization agreement with Central Kentucky Head Start. A lot of these things are just repetitive year after year things, agreements that we continue with. And we received a student accident illness report for 2021, and we're approving the non-resident contract students for 2022, 2023. Now, that's, that's out there next year, but those things gets approved ahead of time. Received the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasurer, school activity fund balance. We're approving the rescue, American Rescue Plan, ESR Assurances Funds, approval of BG-1 for the EC-3 renovation project. All these projects have to have an approval, so we can get that approval from KD also. And, lost my place here. All right, yeah, we're approving the Arctic Engineer for our Woodland Elementary HBAC project. We're going to have to work on the HBAC at Woodland. Approval of a BG-4 bid package for Lincoln Trail Elementary Project, and I think most of those were more.
Closeout documents.
Closeout documents, so we're good there. And approval of a change order 2834 for East Hardin Middle. We're approving a contract with the Commonwealth of Kentucky to pay for 25% of operational costs of the locally operated career and technical head center. It's Early College and Career Center, not receiving state supplemental funding in 2021, so we're supposed to get 25% pay there. And then certified personnel actions, certified classified personnel actions, approval of a 2021, 22 salary schedules, and we have the school site-based council meetings, minutes, and then we're figuring minutes of our June 17 meeting, and also a June 24 special meeting. So anyone got anything they want to comment on or pull out or on the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I move we accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And then we have an action item, adoption of a resolution of the Hardin County Board of Education authorizing Superintendent Teresa Morgan to take all necessary steps to support the Council for Better Education Incorporated. CBE, that'll be the letter required there, in its legal challenge to unconstitutionally of the tax credits in House Bill 563, including payment of appropriate dues and assessments related to the school district's membership in CBE or support of the referred legal challenge. This was part of the 563 bill that we're allowing tax credits to go to public, private school, or private schools. And we feel like that the tax system was set up for a public school system, and we just joined with this group to see if it's basically legal, what the legislators have done. We feel like that tax dollars comes into the school system, and tax dollars need to stay with the, the school districts, and if they start paying out for private tax credits, who knows where the money will end up. So we know we have financial obligation, and we need to meet that financial obligation. Tax monies that comes to pay for the public school system is, is getting thin, so we, we need every dollar of it that comes, because we do offer a lot of credits and subjects that some of these other schools wouldn't have to abide by, and we feel that we should be on a fair plan, though. One school is required to offer so many credits and so forth, we feel like they should all play the same rules. That's, any other comments you all have on that? All right, we need a motion to adopt that resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing Superintendent Morgan to take all necessary steps to support the Council for Better Education Incorporated in its legal challenge to the unconstitutionality of the tax credits in House Bill 563, including payment of any appropriate dues or assessments regard, related to this school district's membership in CBE or its support of the referenced legal challenge.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, new business. We have, item on new business, Mr. Mark Casey, who was elected as board member, had a.
Division one.
Division one, yeah. He had a daughter that chose to work in the school system, and that is not allowed, so Mark has sent in a letter of resignation, and he said, "With the big salary, the board member draws," I think he would just assume his daughter have a nice job. So anyway, we really appreciated the work that Mark done. Mark was very well-educated in the field and was on his way to be an excellent board member. So with heavy hearts, we're going to have to accept his resignation. So I guess we need a motion to accept a resignation, so we can move on and get another person to fill the chair here.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Mark Casey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. And now the superintendent's report. Five minutes.
I'll try to make it through, I promise. First off, it's awesome to have a crowd here, and this is what we hope to see when we return to school this fall, is crowds of students coming in. So I want to give our families some dates to be looking for and paying attention to. First off, coming up is on July 19th, 20th, and July 22nd, we are going to have three community fairs, one for the Trojans, one for the Bulldogs, and one for the Bruins. So those will be coming in on Monday, July 19th, is at North Hardin High School, and all of these are from five to seven. Instead of having the individual fairs at the school, we're having one big back-to-school bash for our three different schools, feeder patterns. And so at the north end is Monday, July 19th, for John Hardin's feeder schools, it is July the 20th. And for our feeder schools to Central Hardin, it is July 22nd. And again, all of those are from five to seven. We will have lots of opportunities, lots of fun for our students, and again, we invite everybody out for that, and just really appreciate the opportunity to get back together and have those gatherings and celebrations. The other part of that you need to know is each school will continue to have their individual open houses, but they won't have the community people there. This is the night that we invite all of our community agencies to come, and we'll be giving away school supplies, and our family resource centers are coordinating all of these events. So we really appreciate our family resource centers coordinators making this a reality for us. And then on July 22nd and June 23rd, which is next week, we have open enrollment. Mr. Wright has made a video on our Hardin County Schools, which will be on our webpage, just showing you how to go in and update the information that you have for your students. If you are enrolling your student for the first time in Hardin County Schools, we do want you to come into the building. We want to put eyes on the students and eyes on the families, so that we can begin to know you and have an association with you before your student comes to the school, and have you, give you the opportunity to ask questions and do tours and things like that. So if you're new to the district, please come in. If you're not new to the district, you can do all of this online without having to come in and updating any paperwork. Hopefully, you've noticed that night that you love, the first day of school, when your kids come home, especially if you have more than one child, that packet of fifty forms, you notice that has been tremendously reduced, and that can be found through our open enrollment. So again, that's July 22nd and 23rd. As far the other thing, we are waiting for full guidance from the Kentucky Department of Education. I'll be honest with you, we were in meetings all day today. I believe there's an email in my inbox, and on June 30th, we will have a FaceTime Live to answer.
July.
Sorry, July.
Pardon.
July 30th, we'll have a FaceTime Live to answer any questions that families may have. So look for that to come out, and you'll be able to have any information.
YouTube Live.
YouTube Live, sorry, not Face2Live, all right, YouTube Live. And so again, we're excited to be having some normal activities, and appreciate being able to see the families and our students fully this year. So that's what we're looking forward to.
I'll second that in a heartbeat. We just want to return to normals. And so, board calendar, August the 8th, it's already been discussed, ribbon cutting at Lincoln Trail and East Hardin. And August the 12th, the first day of school, hopefully everything is normal. And August the 19th, we'll be at Cecilia Valley for the noon meeting. And then August the 19th, and this is after school has started, and, and we will be back here to see how well things went, and hope it's a very positive move. We need to have a short executive session, so on the possibility of purchase of, or acquisition of real estate, so if someone would do that, we'll.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, for the, how move we go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the possible acquisition of real estate?
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. So we will not take any more action tonight. We appreciate you all coming out, and you're welcome to stay, but we are going to have a short executive session to. session to look at some property. Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming down.